Colleagues, I'd ask you to put screens on, please. Just let me know. Colleagues, good afternoon and to the public, good afternoon as well and welcome to the ninth meeting of City Council. This meeting is virtual during the COVID-19 emergency and we would invite you to check the city website for current details of COVID-19 service impacts. Meetings can be viewed via live streaming on YouTube and the city website. The City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for council standing or advisory committee meetings and information upon request. To make a request for any city service, please contact accessibility@london.ca or 519-661-2489. I would look for any disclosures of pecuniary interest. Seeing none. Colleagues, I'm looking for support to change in order the motion required to move item 12 emergent motions to be dealt with now and move item four council in closed session and the ninth report of council in closed session to be moved after stage 13 bylaws. And for that, I'll look please for a mover. Pardon me, councillor Sully, did you have a question first?
No, I was just moving the motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, moved by councillor Sully, seconded by councillor Pelosi, thanks very much. Any comments or discussion? Then we'll call the vote.
I vote yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Closing the vote, the motion's passed 15 to zero.
Two emergent motions. And the first is an emergent motion from councillor Sully and councillor Kayabaga with respect to the Hyde Park Road terrorist attack. And I will call on councillor Sully, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking forward to bring forward an emergent motion, but I'm asking council for leave pursuant to section 20.2 of the council procedural bylaw. So I'll put that motion on the floor.
And you have a second here. Councillor Hillier, thank you very much. Colleagues, we'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Thanks very much. Just leave your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just looking for if I can move the motion at this time and then speak.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, colleagues. Bismillah, hamdulillah. So my thoughts and prayers go out to the victims, the survivor, family and friends. And I want to thank the community leaders, organizers of the vigil, the funeral events.
Can I apologize, councillor Sully? I absolutely hate to interrupt you, but I need a motion on the floor and then second it and then we'll recognize you to speak if you don't mind, please.
Absolutely. So I wanted to move the motion that in response to June 6, 2021 Hyde Park Road terrorist attack, I'm seeking support that A civic administration be directed to work with the local Muslim community, the community diversity inclusion strategy, and stakeholders to help end Islamophobia report back on the outcomes of that work, including the identification of a source of funding if applicable to properly fund initiatives to assist with the implementation of these initiatives. B civic administration be directed to seek input from the Muslim community to determine appropriate means by which the City of London can remember and honor the victims and see the civic administration be directed to report, sorry, to work with the local Muslim community and report back on how the City of London can highlight and honor the contributions of London Muslim community. And in the beginning of the motion, it reads, and I apologize, denounce in the strongest terms Islamophobia and commits to end Islamophobia and hate and acknowledges that Islamophobia exists in the City of London. And that will be a council taking a position on that. So I'll move that motion, Mr. Mayor, and I believe councillor Kayabaga's ready to second that.
Councillor Kayabaga?
I second the motion.
Thanks very much, discussion. I'll recognize councillor Sully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bismillah, hamdulillah. As I was trying to state earlier, my thoughts and prayers go to the victims, the family, friends. And I want to thank the community organizers, the leaders who helped organize the vigil, the funeral, and the many events that's happened within our community these past days. The recent love and solidarity shown by countless Londoners has been very moving. I'm comforted by the fact that when hate shows up, Londoners drown it out with love. But we need to face the reality that for many Muslim Londoners who love London, at times we haven't felt the love back, simply for existing, simply for being Muslim. Islamophobia is real. The countless individual stories we've heard from Londoners and the headlines we've read and discussed about our own city in the past should be a clear picture that London is not perfect. But yet for some, they will deny or minimize the real pain Islamophobia causes. I'm here to call out my own city, London, we have a real problem. Racism has been in London since before 1826. White supremacy, racism, and Islamophobia kills, period. For those hurting right now, just know that I stand with you and will bring the energy and stamina needed to ensure you feel welcomed and safe. Council, I'm upset but not defeated. I'm worried but not intimidated. I'm asking each of you to say enough is enough. I'm asking you to never be a bystander and to speak up, especially when it's not convenient, and hold ourselves, friends, constituents, and city accountable. Tonight, let's stand in solidarity with the Muslim community and vote to put the full weight of the City of London to tackle Islamophobia in our city. The Muslim community isn't going anywhere. London is home. We will continue praying towards Mecca. The vibrant Muslim community will continue to grow and thrive in London, Ontario. So I'm seeking your unanimous support in response to the Hyde Park June 6, 2021 terrorist attack by supporting the following motion that I introduced.
Thank you. I now have councillor Squire to speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I have nothing to add to what councillor Sully said. I rise with regards to a personal issue that I would have, actually a professional issue. As many of you are aware, I'm a member of the Law Society of Ontario. And the Law Society of Ontario has very specific rules and regulations with regard to the administration of justice and very clear rules to say that a lawyer while holding public office has to continue to adhere to those rules. And one of those rules that lawyers follow is that we don't comment or reach conclusions on legal cases before they have reached the state where they have been decided by a judge or a jury, then we'll make those kind of statements. So all I'm standing to say is that in the preamble, some terms are mentioned that are legal terms. It is not within my capabilities as a lawyer to adopt those at this time until such time as courts have dealt with this matter. I support the motion wholeheartedly, but I cannot adopt every word, everything said in the preamble. That being said, I had the opportunity to speak to councillor Sully about the motion and my support for it. He understood where I was coming from and understood the situation I was in. So I will be supporting the motion with those small provisos and I have nothing else to add.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I'm going to save my comments for the main motion after I've moved the amendment to it. I'm hopeful that we can deal with the amendment to add to the main motion quickly and then allow colleagues to comment on it in its entirety. The colleagues will find a letter drafted from myself and the mayor to add a clause to the excellent motion by councillor Sully and councillor Kayabaga, which says the municipal council supports the call for a national action summit on Islamophobia and stands ready to participate in any summit or intergovernmental effort to dismantle all forms of Islamophobia. I'd like to put that on the floor. I believe the mayor is willing to second.
I am prepared to second. Thank you very much. Other comments or questions? Seeing none, we have an amended motion on the floor duly seconded with no other comments or questions. Then we will put that to the vote. Oh, sorry, councillor Morgan.
There was one piece of context I wanted to add for my colleagues in the drafting of this motion. I did reach out directly to the National Council of Canadian Muslims. The wording, when it refers to all levels of government, says federal, provincial, territorial, and municipal. I did reach out to them to ask whether it was their intention to include Indigenous representation at any national action summit. And the answer to that was yes. They could not change the wording of the petition at the time because it had already been circulated and signed. But I wanted colleagues to know that that is indeed their intention, that when they say all levels of government in Canada, they also include and intend to include representation from Indigenous leadership as well.
Thank you. Councillor Kayabaga, I'm going to recognize you next. I apologize. When it comes up on the screen, it's a very faint hand. That's why it wasn't seen. So I'm sure your voice will not be faint. Please go ahead.
Are we commenting on the main motion or just the amendment?
On the amendment, please.
Okay, I'll wait to comment on the main motion. I do support the amendment.
All right, thank you. And councillor Sully, your hand is up. Is this on the amendment?
Yes, it is, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say I thank my colleagues, you know, yourself and all of council, and I support the amendment. I think it's an important step and respond to the call from NCCM. So I wholeheartedly encourage everyone else to support it as well.
Thanks very much. So we're now voting on the amendment and then we'll come back to the main motion as amended. So with that, I see no other speakers. We will call that vote on the amendment.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
So I will, according to the wise clerk, I will need a mover and seconder on the amended motion. Councillor Kayabaga, councillor Pelosi, seconding. Thank you. With that, any comments or questions? Councillor Sully, I want to recognize you.
My apologies, my hand was just up. An error.
Councillor Kayabaga, please. You're on mute, councillor.
The most famous phrase of this century is "I am mute."
Too true.
Thank you. And that I'm a happy seconder on. This past week has been a very difficult week for, not just for the Muslim community, but for everybody who was in the city, for everybody who is in a leadership role in the city, for every person who has had to come to the realization of this act of terror that happened within our city, for every parent who has a child, who has to understand that someone's child is having to grow up without a parent, for every immigrant who's ever come to this country with a hope of finding peace, the hope of finding a future forward, and has had to watch a generation, three generations of one family be removed at one shot because of Islamophobia, because of terrorism. But it is also a moment where, from my upbringing, my faith, my culture, my beliefs, the word of God teaches us that when people mourn, we mourn with them. So we have all taken the time to mourn with the Muslim community, with our Muslim brothers and sisters. And we have committed that after the mourning phase, we have to take action. And this is today what we're doing by taking action to condemn Islamophobia in its form and to continue to lift in prayer every single person who's still mourning, who's still hurting, and to also call upon every single person in leadership in our city. It doesn't have to be at the City of London. Leadership is something that we all participated in before, long before we elected. Leadership starts within your home. Leadership starts within your neighborhood, within your neighborhood associations. Many of you parents, sisters, brothers have reached out to me and asked me how to even have these conversations within your families. I call upon you to not turn away when conversations get uncomfortable. When hate shows up in our city, we have to stand together and fight it back. It is going to be a long road. It's going to be a difficult road. There's going to be a lot of difficult conversations that are going to be had, but we have to have them and we can't shy away. Many people for this, in this moment, we saw a lot of people come from across the country and we thank them for the outpouring of love that they've shown across the country. Lots of outpouring of love have been sent to the City of London. But when they're gone, we have work to do. And this is the city that we continue to live in. So I don't only call upon my colleagues to do this, but I call upon the entire city to think about what this means for us. And we have called ourselves, last year when we were condemning anti-blackness, we said we're going to be a city that was going to be anti-racist. And a year later, we're having to face this conversation again. And I really hope that we do not continue to face this conversation again because the people who have to experience racism, the Muslim community who's had to bury an entire family, three generations of people, cannot continue to have these discussions, cannot continue to try and teach and educate what this means for people of color to live within the walls of racism. So I call upon you, as you think about what mourning means and what mourning with other means and what living in a community means and what healing actually means, and that we start on this journey together. I joined everyone at the Interfaith March on Friday. And I left that space feeling healed, healed by the speeches that were made, healed by the people who were there to pray together within their different faiths and different backgrounds. So this is who we actually are, is our diversity. We're diverse. We are diverse in our backgrounds, in our languages, in our faith. And we have to make sure that every single person feels safe in our community. So as you heard the pain. every single person feels safe in our community. So as you heard the pain in Mohammed's voice, as he called upon you, all of you, to take action, I also echo the same pain. Racism shouldn't have space in our city, but it has had the space for far too long. We need to avoid rhetoric language that brings hate in people's hearts, and we need to switch the conversation to be a conversation of hope, healing, and moving forward. It is not upon the Muslim community to teach us how to condemn Islamophobia. We have to do that. And as leaders of this city, as we sit here on council, I ask you that you reflect on that. I ask you that you have those conversations within your circles of friends, within your family, and most importantly, with your children, because our children are watching. We've had to have very tough conversations with our children, and trust me, they're watching, they're hurting to know that their fellow Fais, who is now home without his parents, is in a very tough situation. So that is my comments today, and I just also lift prayers for the Faisal family, that they continue to rest in peace and that God continue to grant them blessings on their grace. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no Counselor Turner, excuse me.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you to Counselor Saleh and Counselor Kaibaga for bringing this motion forward and for the amendments as well. They're very important. They're strong and important statements that we need to make in our community. Counselor Saleh and Counselor Kaibaga said exactly what needs to be said, which is that each of us has a responsibility to identify and call and use our platforms to call out hate where we see it. If hate finds a home, it takes root. We can't let it find one. And the challenge is that we see tens of thousands of people come out when an act of terrorism and macroaggression occurs. What do we do when we see the microaggressions? And we need that same response at every level, in every conversation. Each one of us, as we campaigned, you may have read Jeff Bennett's letter about his experience campaigning, I think each one of us knew that that's not a foreign experience, that each one of us, as we went door to door, encountered racism, encountered Islamophobia in a number of forms. And did we push back? I hope we did. I had a lot of very frank conversations with constituents. I knew that there was a lot of votes that I wasn't going to receive because of the comments I made back, but I think we all need to challenge that. And that's our role as leaders within the community. But I think we have a pulpit from which we can speak, but all Londoners do, whether that's on social media, whether that's in community groups in which you work, whether it's at your workplace, whether it's in your circle of friends, when you hear jokes that are off-color and not appropriate. It's important for us to continue to push back so that there is no home for hate. To the Faisal family, our sincere prayers and thoughts, and I don't like to use those words because sometimes they seem very hollow, but I think we saw a very, very, very heartfelt response from our community. And I hope the community feels wrapped in love and is ready and stands ready to continue to stand shoulder to shoulder with the community and push back wherever we see this, whether it's micro or macro. Anyway, but I think this is the least we can do in this motion, and it doesn't stop here. It continues from day to day. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Turner. Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Thank you, Your Worship. I want to comment on the motion and then make a few comments on the incidents as well. First off, to my colleagues, Counselor Saleh and Counselor Kaibaga, I want to say thank you for putting this motion together. I think it's excellent, and it covers the things that we need to cover in this. One item in particular I want to mention, only because I know my colleagues have been getting lots of correspondence from residents in my ward, is Part B, the direction the civic administration to seek input from the Muslim community to determine the appropriate means by which the City of London can remember and honor the victims. As I'm sure all of you know, there are many, many, many people who want to help, who want to memorialize, who want to recognize the sacrifices that have been made here. And I think it is highly appropriate to put this through a process where we can find the right way to do so, respecting both the wishes of the community as well as the wishes of the family. I know there are lots of ideas out there, and I would just ask for all of those who have submitted ideas, that this is the appropriate way to deal with this, so that we can take the proper and necessary steps to do something meaningful and respectful to those most impacted. On the incident, and I'm not really sure I have the words beyond what Counselor Saleh and Counselor Kaibaga have said, I would say it is surreal to be an elected official and to have your constituents struck down in the ward that you represent. And I absolutely recognize that this is in no way about me, but there is individual impacts. There's also a community impact. Those who lived in the neighborhood, knew the family, are hurting as well. Beyond that, there is an impact on our Muslim community, a community targeted by this particular act of hate. Obviously, any communities who have been the subjects of hate are feeling the same way. But then this goes beyond our ward, our city, our province, and even our country, to have had an international scope and impact to it, where we saw consulate representatives come to vigils and ambassadors speak at funerals. One of the things one of those individuals said was, "In many parts of the world, hateful acts lead to more hateful acts. An attack leads to another attack and revenge." And the way that both our Muslim community and our London community and our nation have responded with an outpouring of love and compassion, they said that is an example to the world to say, "This is a way to handle a hateful act." Beyond that, we absolutely need to take the actions that are mentioned by my colleagues. But I think it is phenomenal to see the outpouring of love and support for a community and for those most impacted by this in a way that I don't think many have seen in recent years or even their lifetime. The other thing I wanted to mention is our first responders. I know that some of the first on the scene were residents in the neighborhood, but quickly followed by those from Station 14 and Station 6 out of our fire service, and then multiple representatives from the police service, followed by our EMS. I had the ability to visit some of the representatives who were first on the scene from Station 14 with Hassan Mustafa from leadership of our Muslim community, just to say thank you for what they did. And I think we have to recognize and thank all of those first responders, as well as all of our city staff, including Ms. Livingston and her teams, that pulled so many things together this week with very short notice, a national level vigil with leaders from every provincial and federal party and dignitaries and representatives where we had to close a street, a few days later, closing multiple streets again to have the march against hate. I just think what they have been able to accomplish in a short period of time to support the victims, our community, has been phenomenal and amazing, and we thank them for the work they do every day. So I'll leave it at that, because my colleagues, you know, spoke very well, and I just wanted to add those other pieces to what they have already said, and thank my colleagues for all the support that they have given through this process as well.
Thank you. Counselor Cassie.
Thank you, Your Worship. I want to thank Counselor Saleh and Counselor Kaibaga as well for bringing this motion forward, and thanks to you and the deputy mayor as well for the amendment. It's important. It's important that, because we're at a turning point right now, and the community is watching us. And is this just words? Is this just thoughts and prayers? As Counselor Turner mentioned, those words sometimes ring hollow because it ends at thoughts and prayers. So it's, action is extremely important. I especially want to thank Counselor Saleh for the leadership he has shown through this, and I know it's been an extremely painful time. I want to make a special mention to Dr. Javid Sakara, who is the Chair of the London Police Service Board, who's been personally touched by this, this act of hate. These were personal friends. Their families knew each other well. Their children played together. It's been extremely painful for him, and yet he has shown incredible leadership throughout this time, and I know how hard it has been. As I said, the Muslim community is watching us, and it has been, I think, uplifting to see the support that's come from within London and from far abroad. But there is fear in this community, and we have to acknowledge that. And I know, you know, a couple of counselors spoke about these painful conversations. These are the conversations that have to happen, and we cannot, we cannot turn away from this. We have to confront the denialism that really does exist. People have taken exception to naming London as a racist city, but racism lives here. It lives in every corner of this country, unfortunately. But what we've shown, I hope, in the last week, is that love lives here, too. And we can't, we can't let that go. We have to continue to make love the predominant occupant of the City of London. And anytime that hate and terrorism and prejudice and discrimination rears its head, we have to drown it out with love. And I think that this motion is acting on those sentiments. As I said, this is a turning point for London. I've seen very few, but some, public figures come out with that denialism. And I think that those kinds of sentiments being spoken aloud are no longer being tolerated by the majority of the residents of the City of London. We know that there is work to do, and we know we have to work together. And I'm happy, very happy to support this motion and the amendments as well. So again, thank you very much for allowing this council to start here. This is a starting point for us, and we'll continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hopkins.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship, and I just want to take this opportunity to thank Counselor Saleh as well as Counselor Kaibaga for this motion. For me, supporting this motion is going to be quite easy to do. I think the hard work is going to be how we will change. And I recall a couple of years ago, being at a vigil outside of City Hall after the massacre in Quebec, just doesn't seem that long ago, but how we sometimes forget that Islamophobia is real. It is a concern. We have challenges, many challenges in our city. This is one that we have to deal with. And I know as Londoners, we will deal with this. We will come together, and we will change and listen, understand one another. I think those are the things that I'm looking forward to. I want to do that as a person, just wanting to understand, as an elected official representing my community. Those things are something that we all need to feel and to do something about. I think Londoners, we've all felt that cholt, that sucker punch. What happened in the Muslim community must not happen again, and we must not forget. So thank you to the counselors and to everyone's comments. They're important, and we must keep speaking and doing something. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, I have to other speakers. We have a motion on the floor duly moved and seconded. Oh, pardon me. Counselor Helmer, please.
Thank you. I'm listening to what everyone is saying, and it's honestly hard to know what to say. We, I think when we are reeling from the terrorist attack in Quebec City that targeted worshippers in the mosque, at that time, you know, I said that everyone who doesn't have this kind of hatred in their heart, we have to push back against this kind of hate, the targeting of people based on their religion, not just discrimination, but violence, taking people's lives because of what they believe. And we obviously cannot have that in Canada, but it's not a problem that's limited to London or to Quebec City or to Canada. The same Islamophobia is what's motivating people in Norway to kill people because of their faith. It's what's motivating people in Christchurch to kill people because of their faith. It's what's motivating the travel ban that the President of the United States brought in, in the United States in 2017, clearly targeted at predominantly Muslim countries, trying to keep people out of the country, to cut off immigration based on their faith. And it's all part of a pattern of Islamophobia. And, you know, it's not just Muslims who are targeted because of their religion. You know, the same thing is happening with antisemitism. The same thing was a very big problem between Catholics and Protestants, not that long ago. When my parents got married, that was the joining of a Protestant and a Catholic family, and that was a big deal, even in 1975. And we have to push back against all of the discrimination that is targeting people on the basis of their religion. And right now, we have to put a special attention on Islamophobia. I really support the call for the National Action Summit, because we do have to change things if things are going to be different in the future. You know, we can say that racism is unacceptable. We can say that Islamophobia is unacceptable. But what are we going to actually change? What are we going to do differently that's going to make the future better? And I think we have to really spend some time thinking about that. We've got to actually be willing to change those things. I had some emails in my inbox today that I would have previously ignored. You know, they were not just bad opinions, but racist opinions. And instead of ignoring those emails in my inbox, I responded to them, and I told them exactly what I thought about their stupid and racist and prejudicial ideas. And we need to talk about that the perpetrators are often young men, very angry young men who have been turned to racism and Islamophobia, whether they're using vehicles as weapons or guns. It's young men who are committing a lot of these violent acts, and we have to come face to face with why that is. So I have been very impressed by the response from the community. The Muslim community, no surprise, has done an amazing job coming together and supporting the family. Tremendous work by everyone organizing the response. And the broader London community, very well done coming together to try and support and to try and find some way of healing out of such an awful tragedy. We've got a long way to go before people are going to feel safe in our community. We have a lot of work to do. And myself, I'm willing to do whatever it takes to change things for the better.
Excuse me. Thank you very much. We have no other speakers. I will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Colleagues, put forward, under the recognition component, what I think is very appropriate in light of the motion we've just passed in honor of the Faisal family, so that we can honor them and remember them. We do it as well to ensure we remember why this happened and how this happened, namely grotesque hatred rooted in Islamophobia. These acts too frequently have served to shame, dehumanize, and wound our Muslim brothers and sisters. On Saturday, June 6, such an act killed four members of our Muslim family, our London family, and seriously injured a fifth young Faiz. You know, I was quite taken at the funeral attended by a number of colleagues. And at the funeral service, the uncle of Yumna and Fais spoke more eloquently than I ever might. And here was part of his quote, which I would like to share with you in this recognition, as this week has progressed, he said, "We realized that our extended family was much larger than we could have ever imagined." Many people have asked us what they can do to help. "Many people have asked us what they can do to help." "I ask you to be examples of love and compassion. I ask you to take the time to learn from someone who doesn't look the same as you." And he went on so eloquently in so many, in so many ways. So in honor of those lives lost and a nine-year-old boy who continues his recovery at home, I'd like us to pause for a moment of silence out of respect for Talat Afsaal, Salman Afsaal, Medea Salman, Yumna Salman and Faez Afsaal. Would you please join me? Thank you, colleagues. Colleagues, there is a second item twelve point two proclamation request for Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's a two-step process, so you know. Uh, it will require uh a mover and seconder and voted by council to give, give leave to put the emergent motion on the floor. So may I turn over to uh to councillor Helmer, please?
Thank you. Uh, move, uh leave to put the emergent motion on the floor?
Thank you, and that is seconded by councillor Pelosi. Thank you very much. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Thanks very much, councillor Helmer.
Uh, thank you. Hopefully the letter, which we circulated with the agenda as early as we could uh is clear, but Brian Hill, who is the Chair of Priority One for the Community Diversity Inclusion Strategy, and Priority One, which is around uh taking concrete actions around reconciliation and healing, had reached out to see if we would proclaim Indigenous Peoples' Day here in the city of London. Uh, given the timing of the request, which was the eighth of June, uh the only way to do so is to bring it as an emergent motion here to council. So I, I'm happy to put that on the floor. This is obviously a national uh day, uh but I think it's important that we proclaim it uh locally and act on the requests coming from the Chair of the Priority One Working Group. Uh, so put that on the floor and I believe councillor Pelosi has indicated she's willing to second it.
Councillor Pelosi? Seconded, any comments or discussion? Councillor Pelosi?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you for councillor Helmer um for bringing us forward as it was the request of Brian Hill. It's so important as we move towards reconciliation that we first recognize the truth and we have the choice to live with a comfortable lie or an uncomfortable truth. And the uncomfortable truth is for too long, things have gone un- not talked about unnoticed, unrecognized. So as we move through the truths coming up in the residential schools, which the indigenous communities knew, it wasn't a mystery to them, it's the truth coming out to the rest of us, that we all step forward and recognize that it's indigenous um, June is Indigenous Peoples' History Month, the twenty-first, we proclaimed Indigenous Peoples' Day here with the city of London. And as Londoners acknowledge this truth, that might be new to some of them, that they take the opportunity to, to learn, the library has great materials on it. There's the Truth and Reconciliation Reports, reports on missing and murdered indigenous women. We have Atloosa, Namarans uh and other organizations here in town doing great work that reach out, ask and be open to knowledge. And hopefully with the proclamation, people will raise awareness and ask those questions and be in the open. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Colleagues, I see none. We'll call the question.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to put my hand up, but it-
Well then, you're just in time. We haven't uh put the, put it up for vote. Please go ahead, councillor Calabaga.
Thank you. Um, I do apologize. I was really trying to fiddle with my computer and it was taking too long to, to raise the hand, so uh I had to turn on my camera for that. Uh, I just wanted to thank councillor Helmer and councillor uh Pelosi for bringing this motion forward. Um, and I also just wanted to say that I support this motion. Um, I think that um it's important that uh when we talk about po- part of what I mentioned earlier in my comments was uh moving forward as a city, that it continues to be anti-racist and um it also means that we have to get in a place where we have, we, we have to start having decolonized mindsets and think about um this land that we really sit on. Um, I, I realize that we have a lot of meetings here on council. Um, it's been, I'm in my third year here and I haven't really seen any uh meetings where we actually have even started to recognize the land on which we meet on. Um, and I think that's, that's, that, that's a disservice to the entire city, to be uh quite frank, but um I don't think that we did it out of um spite. I think that part of learning and, and bringing awareness to the history of this country and, and the people of this country, um I think we can all learn. And, and, and I, I, I would encourage everybody to spend some time to figure out what it is that we can do to continue to contribute into a path um forward. I won't call it a path of reconciliation because we're not there yet. Um, I think that um as we continue to, to, to unravel and, and find out and learn more about um what happened to the indigenous people on this land and how we got here as settlers. I'm an immigrant to this country. It's important that we recognize the history, we honor it and that we also work towards um resolving um this longstanding dispute. Uh, or I wouldn't call it dispute, I would call it um this longstanding lack of relationship, a lack of healing and lack of reconciliation. Uh reconciliation um insinuates that there was a relationship that was built and then we want to reconcile back to that, but there was no relationship built. Um, a lot of our history right now is, we're finding out that it's based in in colonialism and this stuff is not being even taught in schools. So as settlers, it's our job to, to also educate ourselves and to stand with the community, uh with the indigenous communities and support them. So this month, despite everything that's happening, I do encourage everybody to spend some time learning and, and figuring out a way to contribute to this path forward. Um, and I, I, I'm watching my words as I, I want to say reconciliation because we just repeat that word so much, but it is empty when there is no action that follows it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sully?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank uh my colleagues for bringing forward this important motion um and to s- send my solidarity, my thoughts to the indigenous community um in the wake of the findings um and of what is, of what else is to learn. Um, you know, the truth is painful, our history is painful, our present and our future will be painful because uh, you know, there's still more discoveries, I'm sure, unfortunately, to be made and there's still more time for us to learn of the history uh locally that's painful. And we, we owe so much to the indigenous community and we owe so much to them uh to continue to work and to stand as allies. And I wanted to send my whole heart um uh appreciation and thoughts to them as, as they grieve and as they continue um to go through these difficult times.
Thank you. I see no other speakers. So we will call the question.
Councillor Pelosi?
Sorry, it didn't come up for me, but although, yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Says uh part of our recognitions, uh I will be asking in a moment uh for uh for a moment of silence for our indigenous children. The discovery last month of the remains of two hundred and fifteen children buried on the grounds of a residential school in Kamloops, British Columbia, marked the beginning of a national reckoning. Among other things, this has resulted in the reopening of painful wounds for many residential school survivors and indigenous peoples. It has also forced all Canadians to reflect upon and confront a dark chapter uh in this country's history, which until now has been largely avoided and ignored. The discovery last week of more remains on the grounds of a residential school near Brandon, Manitoba, along with today's announcements from Premier Ford, ten million dollars for three years to identify, investigate and commemorate residential school burial sites in the province, remind us of our collective commitment and obligation to the truth. I think it's only appropriate, colleagues, that I ask us to I'd like, I'd like to ask us to acknowledge these children and ask you to join with me for two hundred and fifteen seconds of silence in memory of the remains of the children discovered in Kamloops, near Brandon, and for the souls of others yet to be found. Would you please join me? Thank you. Colleagues, this has been an extremely difficult month in so many ways. And earlier this month, we lost one of our own. Londoners mark the passing of a former mayor, our city's first female mayor, Jane Bigelow. She served as mayor from nineteen seventy-two through nineteen seventy-eight, championing a host of environmental and social causes. I'm reminded of a picture inside uh City Hall, actually just outside the councillors' quarters, r- offices. And there are two or three dozen people in the picture and just one woman. And it's Jane Bigelow. The rest were all white males. Jane just didn't break through the glass ceiling, she shattered it into tiny bits. So colleagues, I'd ask you to join me in a moment of silence as we honor her worship, Jane Bigelow. Thank you. Most colleagues uh may be aware that earlier this morning, we were saddened to learn of the passing of former fire chief Jim Fitzgerald. The flag outside City Hall has been lowered out of respect for his family and gratitude to his incredible service to our community. You see uh Chief Fitzgerald was an incredibly charismatic gentleman with a kind heart, love of the fire service, love of London and compassion for all. Our thoughts and prayers are with Platoon Chief Sean Fitzgerald and his family as we grieve his passing. So with that, colleagues, I'd ask you to join me in a moment of silence to honor Chief Jim Fitzgerald. Thank you. There are no confidential matters uh to be considered in public. So I will move to the minutes. I'll look to, for a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting held on May twenty-five, two thousand twenty-one. Is there a mover? I see councillor Van Mirberg and seconded by councillor Lewis. Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? See none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Thank you, colleagues. And some petitions, we can do this all in one motion. Uh, there are two uh items, six point one uh and it is related to item nine, three point two of the Ninth Report of the Planning Environment Committee, having to do with the application of seventeen fifty-two and seventeen fifty-four Hamilton Road. And six point two, which is sixteen uh, which includes sixteen, including four added, related item seventeen, three point one- item seventeen, three point one oh on the Ninth Report of the Planning Environment Committee, having to do with the application at four thirty-five through four fifty-one Rideout Street North. I'll look for a mover and second, or please to put those into the appropriate areas within the committee reports. Moved by councillor Lewis, seconded by councillor Hopkins. Thank you. Any discussion? See none, we'll call the question. Thank you, colleagues. There's no motion, there are no motions to which notice is given. Reports, the Eighth Report of the Civic Works Committee, I'll call on councillor Pelosi, please, to present the report.
Thank you, your worship. We had the Eighth Report of the Civic Works Committee meeting. I've been given no notice by colleagues to pull anything, so I'm prepared to put everything on the floor if no one has objection at this point.
Does anyone wish anything dealt with separately? I'm embarrassed, councillor, I should have called a conflict because on item nine, five point one in the Deferred Matters, there is an issue related to seven forty-five Waterloo Street, which is where my family has a business. So I will ask that that item be pulled separately, and I will abstain from that item. Any other items? Councillor Ploza, back to you then.
Thank you. Our consent items were seven items, two point one to two point seven. They were all routine wastewater treatment, no regular tenders, and just good projects coming forwards with no concerns. And every one of those items passed unanimously through committee. I will put all those on the floor.
With the exception of item nine, five point...
Yeah, without the Deferred Matters list, yes.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Yes, I didn't attend the committee, but I did want to make just a brief comment on item two point three from the committee agenda, item four on council's agenda, which is the Hyde Park and Sunningdale Road West roundabout. This is an important project that's in our transportation master plan, and I can tell you an intersection that certainly needs improvements. I did want to say, I appreciate this project has been moving along through the public consultation. There is an exceptional amount of interest in the neighboring communities, and I know that as soon as, now that the contractor, while pending the motions tonight, be approved, that we will know soon when the traffic disruptions and construction will begin. I would invite my constituents to visit maps.london.ca/renewlondon, which is where you can find all of the information on road closures, and that will be up there as soon as it is available. So thanks to the committee for passing this, I'll certainly be supporting it tonight.
Thank you. Councillor Turner.
Thanks, your worship. With respect to that same item, Deputy Mayor just mentioned the intersection improvements. I don't like to use hyperbole often, but this project will save lives. As a paramedic, I responded very often to this intersection for some very catastrophic side impact collisions. They continue every year. This roundabout will stop those, and that's incredibly important. Even any collisions that might occur will be at significant lower velocities and not result in the same carnage that happens at this intersection each year. So I'm happy to see this move forward, and I was happy to be on the committee as it came through.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Colleagues, before we go to the vote, I think it's incumbent on the chair to advise council when someone, when we've been advised by a colleague has had to excuse themselves. Details don't matter, but we do, we think it's a matter of courtesy to you, to inform you, so councillor Sli has taken his leave, just to make you aware. So with that, no other comments or questions? Let's call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, your worship. I will now put item number nine, five point one, being the Deferred Matters list, on the floor and being noted, but then hopefully the next committee cycle, this will, conflict will be resolved for the mayor.
We can hope. That's great. Thank you. Any comments or questions? See none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to zero with one recused.
Councillor Ploza.
Thank you, worship. That concludes my report for the eighth meeting of the Civic Works Committee.
Thank you. Now for the Ninth Report of the Planning Environment Committee, I'll call on councillor Squire.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Remember the good old days when I was Chair of Civic Works and didn't have to stand very long, but those days have changed. On the Ninth Report of the Planning Environment Committee, we will be pulling number seventeen, which is four thirty-five to four fifty-one Rideout Street North. I'm not aware of any other matters that are going to be pulled. I haven't been advised, but there may be others.
Does anyone wish any other item to be voted on separately? Back to you, councillor Squire.
I'll put the balance of the report on the floor.
Comments or questions? Deputy Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I would like to comment on item sixteen, which is three point nine, which is sixteen fifty-nine Hyde Park Road and also property on North Rutledge. This is a significant development. I should say the continuation of a significant development in the Hyde Park area that is going to transform that corner. This is phase two of an eight-story building where there is residential on top of commercial. And this particular phase includes the retention of a significant heritage asset, one of the few that I actually have designated in my ward. I want to say it's been a great process to work with staff and the developer on how this comes to fruition. In this case, this building will be picked up and moved a little bit to accommodate both the building, the distances from it, as well as create what will be a very wide and dynamic streetscape. With all that residential development at this historic corner, having a little bit of an extra boulevard on both phases of this development and the ones that may continue to the north, which will be forthcoming to council later, is going to provide an excellent space for activation with the ground floor businesses as well as the residents there. I know the Hyde Park BIA is very excited about these opportunities because they've got lots of ideas for programming and drawing people to the businesses in the community. So I just wanted to draw attention to this particular development because once these are completed, this part of the city will never look the same again, and it will be very active and very dynamic for years. This has been a corner with a whole bunch of school buses sitting at it, and this will certainly have a different feel as we transform Hyde Park into a very active and dynamic village.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, your worship. I thought I'd add my real hand in addition to my virtual one, just to make sure. I just want to comment on number fifteen, which is three point eight on the committee agenda, and it's sixteen ninety-seven Highbury Avenue North. It's a development in Ward Five. It was, it's being recommended for approval by the staff and by the committee, and it's a slight twist coming to us from Habitat for Humanity. So just a slight twist on what their normal developments are like. They usually do single-family homes or semi-detached even, I believe, but this is a multi-unit, two multi-unit buildings with twenty units in total of affordable housing on the north side of the Thames River on a large piece of land that right now has a single home on it. There was some concern, there have been some concerns in the community because it represents a change to what is there now, and a change to, in some way, to the surrounding area. There are some townhouses a bit to the north of this, so it's not too much of a stretch from the surrounding residential development. I think they've done a good job working with city staff, making this fit into this area. It will open up some opportunities for pathway connections, for the multi-use pathway in the area, which is also a good thing, and provide some well-needed housing in this affordable sector for people in the city of London. So all in all, I think it's a very positive development, and I'm happy that the committee is recommending approval for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? See none, we'll call the question. Councillor Squire.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to now put number seventeen on the floor, which is four thirty-five to four fifty-one Rideout Street North. I think from the public about this, this was dealt with in a lengthy way at planning. So to get things started, I suppose I'm prepared to move the staff recommendation so that we have something on the floor, and then the debate can begin.
So noted, thank you. Comments or questions?
Thank you, through the mayor. I was able to listen to the committee discussion, but not the entire thing, and I just wanted to ask a couple of questions through you to staff. One is about the section twenty-eight permit and the issue around the floodplain, how the development of this kind of building might impact an area that, as we know, floods extensively. I just wanted to get that answered at the council meeting so that especially members of the public who are very concerned can hear the answer to that.
So let's hear from staff. I think that's a clear enough question as it relates to issues around flooding in that, around that proposed development. Can we hear from staff, please?
Through you, your worship, it's Paul Yeoman. I'm happy to answer that. So there's been extensive discussions between the applicant and the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority related to the slope stabilization for the property. They've come up with a technical solution that meets the objectives and intents of the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority, and they're able to sign off on it. It's been going on for a number of years to reach the solution, so we're not anticipating any concerns should council approve the development with a section twenty-eight permit that would occur after.
Councillor Hammer.
Thank you. And just through the mayor, as a follow-up, I remember not that long ago, looking at this area and seeing that the water was just, I don't know, a few feet below the top of the West London Dyke. And from a city perspective, as the owner of the infrastructure over on that side of the river, we have any concerns about the development and its potential to impact flood control in that area?
Mr. Yeoman.
Through you, worship, we don't. We believe that the mitigation measures will be in place for the surrounding area. The building will also be appropriately floodproofed as well to ensure that there's the protection of lives and property.
Councillor Hammer.
Okay, so just some comments. There are some things I really like about the proposal and some things that I'm not such a big fan of. It's very strange to me that we have on a brand-new redevelopment like this, where we're retaining heritage buildings and building a taller building, that one of the things we would retain is the surface parking, either down at the bottom where the land might go be transferred to the city and some parking would stay there, and at the top level on Queen's Ave, the service parking spots that are there now, keeping those, I think it'd be much better and more useful to have those as some kind of a green space or some kind of building. That being said, I think overall the proposal is a good one in retaining the heritage buildings that are along a rideout and building a slender tower in behind is a good proposal. I think that the urban design folks and their comments on it are very good. I think the stepping it aside and back as sort of as far south as possible from Eldon House is the right way to do a development of this size adjacent to such an important historic site in the city. So, you know, I know this one is difficult because it's changing the skyline and around these heritage buildings, but I think the important thing for me is that it's retaining the heritage buildings, and it's essentially replacing an underutilized building that's in behind in a service parking lot with a tall tower that people will be able to live in and will be a wonderful addition to the city. So, you know, I support the rezoning. I do think that service parking is a waste along Queen's Ave, but, you know, that's not such a big issue for me that I would vote against the whole proposal.
Thank you. I have councillor Hillier.
Yes, just a question with staff. I'm curious, what is the height of the proposed building at Fifty King?
Mr. Yeoman, can you respond to that?
I think, your worship, so Fifty King, which was a recent approval, is proposed, or sorry, is approved for ninety-five meters, which is twenty-eight stories tall.
Councillor? Thank you very much. Councillor Turner.
Thank you, worship. Through you too, Mr. Yeoman. I have another question about height, actually. In the report, it talks about the maximum height being twenty, twenty stories, and then with bonusing up to thirty-five stories, and we're going to forty stories. I didn't quite get the rationale as I was reading through the report as to why that extra, extra amount of height and density. It's another five stories and almost fifty percent more density than what is prescribed as our highest amount of density associated with the official plan.
Mr. Yeoman, would you respond?
Through you, worship. So the application date actually is prior to when the London Plan policies were in full force in effect related to the site. So with the eighty-nine official plan, which is the policy framework in place, it does state that there is a height limit in the downtown of three hundred, or sorry, a density limit in the downtown of three hundred and fifty units per hectare. However, with bonusing, there is no cap on that, so it relates to the bonusing package that's brought before council. I will note that the density that's proposed for the site is five hundred units per hectare, which is considerably less than what we've been actually seeing with the number of downtown development projects. For example, the Fifty King site that was recently referenced, that is seven hundred and fifty units per hectare, we've seen actually upwards of a thousand units per hectare for some sites as well.
Councillor.
Thank you. Through you, worship, just as a follow-up, when we provide for bonusing, we, I know we've had this conversation before at the planning committee about calculation of the lift associated with the extra density and height that's associated with permissions for bonusing, and using that calculation to determine what public good is associated with the bonusing provisions. Five percent for affordable housing seems a little low. Eighty percent of market and fifty-year time period is significant, though I recognize that. But of a building of this magnitude and that much extra height, even above what we've contemplated in the London Plan, it seems like a small trade-off, I guess, in order for the accommodation for what's being asked. I guess I would just look for comment.
Comments, Mr. Yeoman?
Through you, worship. So it's an excellent question. It's one that we often, to be honest, struggle with as your civic administration. We actually don't have set parameters related to bonusing that actually states that for extra, every extra story of height or every unit per hectare, this has to be provided. So what we do as your, our staff team, is we do our best to negotiate with the applicant to get the best package that we can for bonus items. And you'll can see that what's recommended before you has a number of items related to affordable housing, the retention of the heritage buildings in situ, the materials of the building, and so on and so forth. So we provide that to council with our recommendation, but council is the ultimate arbiter on whether or not they believe that is sufficient facility services and matters in relation to the bonus that's provided.
Councillor Turner.
Thank you, worship, and thanks, Mr. Yeoman. Those are my questions. I think councillor Helmer identified the other questions, flood mitigation and slope stability. Those need to be satisfied to the satisfaction of the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority, so that's important. I too see some merits to this proposal and some things I'm not wild about. I'm very happy to see the retention in situ of the buildings and without alteration, so there's no demolishing, not facade. So there's no demolishing, not facadeism, it's not just keeping those components, it's it's the buildings in their entirety, which is very helpful. I'm I I'm supportive of seeing density in the core because that's one of our stated objectives. The adjacency of such a building to these sits fairly significant historical pieces of our built heritage in addition to its proximity to Eldon House, give me some pause as well. And and I have concerns about those. At the fair fairly significant departure from from what we would want to have prescribed through either the London Plan or the official plan to me is is where I'm really kind of on edge about whether I would support the application or not. The view shed as you come down Queens Ave is is important as you see the forks of the Thames and this will block that pretty much entirely. And, you know, one of the one of my favorite things in the city is is seeing those lights at Lebat Park, kind of light up the sky in summer's evening. But but that said, that's no reason to to decline an application. I will be facing a question about temporary parking lot renewal on Queens Ave by the same applicant. And that was promised for a really big building, a nice redevelopment, and it remains as a temporary surface parking lot. And so I I don't have a lot of faith this building will ever get built. I I say to the applicant, prove me wrong. I think that that would be important if but I I'm I'm not not quite convinced. So I I'm here to listen to the arguments of my colleagues. I came in with an open mind, having read the report and having some concerns. I'm intrigued to see if if there's other pressure points that my colleagues have as well. Certainly, I've seen a lot of correspondence from the community. Our obligation to this is to to align with the Planning Act and our and our planning policies. And and that's something I take seriously. So my final point is would be that I don't think five percent of the units for the level of density and height that's being requested is sufficient in terms of the bonusing trade-off. But I'd like to see more. I do recognize that that fifty years is a fairly significant commitment.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Yes, I want to thank my colleagues for the comments so far. I certainly recognize some of the concerns as well as those coming from the community, and I think Counselor Turner and Counselor Helmer outlined those well. On this particular one, I I think that this project aligns with the number of our priorities for the downtown. Not only does it conform to a number of the plans, including our downtown plan, the the idea of putting some density in the core in this particular spot is very attractive to me. We've got a number of assets in the area that we're looking to support. Those include local businesses, Dundas Place, The Market, Budweiser Gardens. And to have this type of density with that level of walkability, I think, is important on the bonusing. And I I agree with Counselor Turner. The bonusing is always a tricky thing for me because there are other cities where counselors are very involved in the bonusing provisions. And in some cases, that over politicizes them and gets into, you know, ward-based trade-offs. I, although sometimes am am not super happy with the package of bonusing items, I recognize that this is a process led by our staff through negotiation. And I appreciate what Mr. Yeoman has said, that certainly you could look at any one individual component of the bonusing and say, here's, you know, we would like a few more affordable housing units. But I recognize that they have negotiated a a strong package of bonusing provisions that includes both heritage retention, building design, sustainable and green materials and methods of building, as well as some other components that does include affordable housing. So although I I appreciate the comments that my colleagues have made about the level, I I think that the the package of bonusing on this one is is appropriate. And I also recognize that we as counselors don't really get involved in in the negotiations of the details. And I think that that's probably for the best at this time. So I'm supportive of this particular development for many of the reasons mentioned. I certainly think that one of the really important things we need to continue to do as a council is to create as many opportunities as possible for people to live in the core. We have many challenges downtown. Getting bodies and feet on the street allows the support of local businesses, local events and venues, and I think bolsters the the downtown economy in a way that 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 truly benefits all of London. So I'll be supporting this proposal.
Thank you. Counselor.
Thank you, worship. I'm not going to repeat everything that Counselor Morgan just said. I agree with him when it comes to looking at bonusing, we have to look at the total package. I think it's important, though, here at council for the public record and to correct some misinformation that is has been circulating about this policy. And I've seen it even on the petition that was submitted by opponents to this policy or to this proposal saying that we were rezoning Harris Park. We're not rezoning Harris Park. This is a private property application. This is not part of the park. And in fact, one of the bonusing components of this proposal is a land gift to the city that actually allows us to expand Harris Park, increasing public green space availability in the immediate area. I also think it's really important to note that this proposal, and of course, these would still have to work through site plan and and obviously Counselor Turner and Counselor Helmer both referenced the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority's section twenty-eight considerations that need to be made. But also in this proposal, not only is there public parking, there's secured bike parking in publicly accessible spaces and public electric vehicle charging stations included in the parking area as well. Those are important considerations as well as we think about how people get around. Obviously, we hope that some of the residents in this building are not going to be car-dependent every day, that they will be using other methods of transportation. And this offers some of that in the bonusing package as well. So I supported this at committee. I will be supporting it again tonight. The deputy mayor is absolutely right that really key to revitalizing our downtown is getting the residential critical mass there that creates a true neighborhood.
Thank you. Counselor Squire.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I I also supported this matter at committee and will will support it again this evening. I I just a few weeks ago, I was talking about downtown and that I didn't have the ultimate faith that all of the small things we were doing were going to ultimately solve what we have downtown. And I expressed that more construction, more buildings downtown of a residential nature would do that. And from my point of view, that's what this is. We don't have the ability to tell people who own property privately where they shall build their next building. There seems to be some belief that we can do that. We can't if they meet the the policies that are set out. And in this particular case, the the developers follow the rules quite strictly, including spending a great deal of time with the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority to comply with the needs that they have in that given area. They've also spent a great amount of time with city staff dealing with bonusing and other issues. And I agree with the deputy mayor, that's not a matter that I'm going to step into at the last minute and try to insert my my opinion on that. And and included in that is negotiations for affordable housing. I don't believe in interfering with that, and I and I won't do that tonight. Lastly, there was a lot of correspondence about this being somehow not complimentary in any way to heritage properties that are located in the area. I think there's a large amount of people that I heard from that 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 said to me that they didn't agree with that. And and they understand and appreciate that Eldon House is still going to be there. These buildings that are not used very well now will continue to be there. So there are a lot of people who actually look forward to this type of development. So I supported it at committee and I will continue to support it this evening.
Thank you. I see your hand, Counselor Cassidy. Your virtual hand.
Thank you, worship. I have a quick question through you to sta- staff. In the report, it talks about a heritage easement that will be in place. Wondering how how would we envision that being enforced? Or how we intend to work with the property owner in the future? And I say this because frankly, we have had heritage easements in the past. And I'm not sure how successful they have been in 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 our taking a proactive approach to to looking after that heritage. So I I wonder, in this particular case, what are the plans for the heritage easement?
Mr. Yeoman, can you help us with that?
Yes, through your worship, so a heritage easement provides an enhanced level of protection for cultural heritage properties. It's something we actually don't ha- have very often. It's something that gets registered on title as an obligation on the owner. And it can actually stipulate certain parameters related to maintenance and retention of the building. So that's something we'll be looking to do with the property owner related, especially given that it's related to the bonus as well. Making sure the heritage assets are viable and are actually continuing to add value to the the broader area and to our community as a whole.
Counselor Cassidy.
So going forward, will will the the plans around the heritage easement, will that become part of the site plan discussion? Or and will there be something like written out? And I say this just because I know in one building in particular where we have a heritage easement and we really haven't enforced it or or use that the way we could have. So will there be concrete plans for enforcing this heritage easement going forward?
Mr. Yeoman?
Through your worship, I'm actually going to ask if Mr. Barrett can speak a bit more to the heritage easement aspect because he has more knowledge of that.
Go ahead, Mr. Barrett.
Thank you through your worship. A- as Mr. Yeoman noted, the an easement generally brings with it a higher degree of enforceability. There are not very many properties that have heritage easements on them now. And the nature of those easements, I think, probably speaks to their ability to be enforced. This is one, and certainly understanding the the concerns as it relates to these properties, it's one that we would be working to ensure that the issues around inspection, the ability of the city to enforce the conditions of the easement would be something that we would be we would ensure we would address. Also, this one's a little bit bit different because as Mr. Yeoman also noted, this would be tied to the bonus provision. So we've sort of got, oh, I don't know if hooks is the correct term, but we have a number of different places where we'd be able to address the easement. So certainly as part of the bonusing provision, there will be a greater degree of certainty with respect to those matters that we can ensure would be addressed in the easement.
Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you. Thank you for those answers through your worship. I have another question about the bonusing. Counselor Turner brings up some really good points about that. And I agree that we're not going to get into the negotiations at the phase of the planning application when when it's being negotiated with staff and with development staff. However, can we have that in policy where we're getting set to work on our inclusionary zoning policy? Can we not have something written rather firmly in policy that says what the trade-offs should be? What the minimum percentage of units we would like to see, et cetera, et cetera? And if we're going to go to exorbitant heights, then we would expect a greater degree of affordable housing, things like that. Is are these the kinds of things that will be put in that inclusionary zoning policy? Is it something we have to look at as a different policy?
Mr. Yeoman?
Yes, through you, your worship. So the parameters around bonusing is something we've actually had on our work plan to to lock out in greater detail. Unfortunately, with COVID, a lot of our resources, including those that were in the former city planning area, were devoted to processing applications. So it's something we haven't been able to advance as quickly as we would have liked. We're also mindful to the problems with Bill 108 is abandoning the bonusing framework as well. So it's coming to an end in the not-too-distant future as well. So that's sort of impacted our prioritization as well, too. But we do recognize the need for greater clarity in this going forward, and we'll do our best to move something forward in the near term.
Are we good, Counselor Cassidy? I'm sorry.
Sorry, just a couple of comments now. Really quickly, I I I hear the concerns of the community. We have received some some degree of support as well for this this building. I I don't necessarily agree that heritage and modern new can't live side by side. I think, for example, the the Azure Tower that that the previous council approved, you know, right beside Heritage Church, actually opened up opportunities to have greater views of that church that had previously been hidden by another heritage building. So there there are there are ways and means to bring in the new where the old already exists. And so I am hopeful that that this will add to and enhance the the downtown area. We do need more residents there. We need the more feet on the street. We need that vibrant living downtown. And, you know, I I am one who has expressed some serious doubts in the past about applications coming from this particular applicant that don't ever seem to get built. So I, a- as previous counselors have said, we we make our decisions based on the legislation, based on the Provincial Planning Act, the Provincial Policy Statement and our own official plan. And based on on all of that legislation and our staff who are professionals in this realm, I'm supportive of the application. I like Counselor Helmer and Counselor Turner have some some reservations. I would like to see surface parking lot go away and and have more green space or or perhaps another building. But overall, this represents, I think, good planning and I think thoughtful juxtaposition of old and new. So thank you, your worship. I will be supporting this application.
Thank you. And less to be said, Counselor Cassidy, that I was trying to inch you off the microphone. I would just wasn't sure. I thought you might have been done, but thank you very much. Counselor Hopkins.
Your worship, I think I put my hand up just in front of the ward counselor's hand. And I would like to listen to the ward counselor before I make my comments.
Well, that's the chair's prerogative. Counselor Kebaga, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Counselor Hopkins and the mayor for letting me speak. I just, my internet has been in and out, and I just wanted to ask a question on the mitigation part, the flood mitigation part. This, I think Counselor Helmer had asked a question and the staff responded. And while the screen looks frozen now, so I don't know if you guys can hear me.
We hear you fine. Please go ahead.
So I I if I could just get from staff to answer that question a little bit, I had some questions around the the flood mitigation.
Was it, sorry, just before I directed over to Mr. Yeoman, was there a very specific question about flood mitigation that you wanted to direct Counselor?
Yeah, so given that this area is an area that is a floodplain, so I just wanted to know what this is, you know, quite a big application that they're submitting. I just wanted to know if there are any plans around that.
Mr. Yeoman.
Through your worship, my apologies for not being more clear the the first time. So there's a a number of measures that are being put in place. One is the floodproofing of the building. That's really important. The other is that there will be site plans that will be prepared to address floodplain cut and fill and compensation measures to ensure that there's no net loss of floodplain storage, which is really important, given the location of the area. The valley embankments are going to be remediated as well as part of it, too. There is going to be a two-year time limit in place for the section twenty-eight permit to ensure that that encourages the construction of the building and also to ensure that the approvals that are put in place make sure they mitigate what's going to be occurring. And finally, the erosion control plans are going to be addressed at the site plan stage as well, too, to make sure that there's no impact on the surrounding area.
Counselor Kebaga.
Thank you. Another question I had, or I I would say reservation I had about this application was, and I I think I raised this last year when I was on the planning committee, we talked about, you know, our our zoning around affordable housing. And last year, we were in a process of having a policy that was specific for the city of London in terms of having some written document that would encourage developers to to create more affordable housing. And I I'm I'm a little concerned that, you know, to this point, we still haven't had that that policy be in place. So, I mean, five percent is better than nothing, obviously. But I think that, given the situations that everybody finds themselves in, especially with COVID, we can all agree that we need more housing that is accessible to to different incomes across the city. There are a lot of people who, young people, want to live downtown and can afford to live downtown because rent is getting expensive. And the provincial government has not been able to satisfy the the rent control around the entire province. So that is a concern of mine as we continue to approve developments. We we really need to be mindful and proactive on on creating a city that's accessible and affordable. I also have reservations around the fact that, and I've mentioned this in the past, the applicant has not been able to, for me, in my opinion, has not been able to meet a lot of requirements in the past of promising, over-promising and under-delivering. So this was a concern I also had. I I I recognize that staff can't answer that concern, but I just really want to know if anybody or not this application, if it passed, if it was supported and passed all the requirements that or not this application, if it passed, if it was supported and passed all the requirements that it needs to pass, if this would actually go into place. And this is something that we would see because we are in a place where we do need more development downtown. We didn't, we do need more housing downtown, and we need more people to live downtown. But my reservations again are that we we have approved a lot of spaces where development was promised and that thing has has happened. Can and any staff member comment on that?
Mr. Yeoman. Yeah, we're talking specifically to this project. Mr. Yeoman, do you wish to comment or add anything to this?
I'll I'll do your, my best worship. What I can say is that the the applicant, as far as developments, has expressed to us their keen desire to develop this site as a bit of a catalyst for further development in the downtown. That's the information that's been conveyed to us through the application process. And unfortunately, the applicant isn't here to to speak to to their intent, but I think that's the best I can provide to you.
Thank you. Anything else, Councillor Kebaga, please?
Thank you. You know, as
I'm sorry, just that last part of that last line, it was very, very low. Could you just repeat your sentence again, please, so we can hear it?
Yeah, I was just saying that I was making my last comments. My last comments are, you know, I encourage development downtown. I think we need to see more people, more foot downtown. There are a lot of issues that we've experienced in the core in the last two years of the pandemic that are also related to the lack of activity in the downtown, to the lack of people being physically in the core. I I've received a lot of communications from different members of the community asking us not to support this this application. And I've also received equally a great amount of, you know, support and the support part of the emails that we we got, there's a lot of mention around having more people move downtown and live downtown and encourage development in the core. And I support that. I think that is the best way to move forward in 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 order to continue to revitalize our downtown. I also, you know, shared my reservations. I think that, as many of my colleagues have made comments, I think this is a something that we should support. My reservations again rely on on the fact that I, we have had misleading applications that did not come through. So I was concerned about that. I was also concerned about the flood mitigation. And also, the biggest part of it was the affordable part and asking our staff to really take that seriously and come up with a a policy that would encourage all developers across the city to continue to build housing that is affordable for every single income, especially younger people, especially people who are within the lower middle class of of our city. So I I will continue to listen to the comments that my colleagues make, but I have been, this follows the the Planning Act, it meets the requirements, and I think that, as I've done so in the past, I'll continue to support developments and and applications that support the revitalization of the downtown and that that meet the requirements of the Planning Act.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and thank you to everyone for your comments. I have been listening very intently, and as you know, I did not support this at Planning Committee. I had a number of reservations, even though I do believe some kind of development on this underutilized area should happen. But I'm not sure if it's this application that should happen, and that's what we are approving. I I want to just make a comment here. I received an email from a resident saying I should leave council since I do not support the London Plan. And I do want to go on record here saying I ran in 2014, supporting the London Plan as well as in 2018. I'm not sure about, I I think there is this missing middle sometimes when we approve developments. Even in the downtown area, do we always have to go to the highest possible degree? I'm not convinced that that we should. And in this application, a 40-story, not sure how that bonusing worked out either, but a 40-story built on a floodplain that still has a number of concerns, if that can even happen, in a heritage district is still a challenge for me. I I know our policies may support it, and and as a council, we are bound to our policies and plans. But I've heard a number of comments here, even tonight, about the challenges of downtown. One of the challenges of downtown is how do we get our buildings built? There have been many applications that I've supported in the past, I think, four or five years that I've sat on planning. And these buildings are not being built. I agree with councillor Turner, even if this building will be built. As we speak to the importance of building and regenerating and getting people in the downtown, I want that. I want that just as much as each and every one of you want that and supporting just for the sake of putting it there, out there and just supporting it and having all these questions and concerns, especially especially around the floodplain mitigation part and how that is even going to work, how the parking structure is even going to work. I know there's a lot of unanswered questions, and that still concerns me. Biggest part of my concern here is this has great public interest to Londoners. And the public process of communication that we have on applications such as this to me is a grave concern, how we reach out to the public. It was even mentioned tonight here that there's a lot of misinformation out there. One of the reasons there's a lot of misinformation is how do we engage with the public? How do we educate? How do we, as a council, ward councillor, developer, builder, city staff, how we do this communication? I know it's been difficult within a pandemic, even more so, but it becomes even more important that we work harder, that we get that information out to the public so they can understand the process and what we can and can't do. With this application, there still remains a number of unanswered questions. And I'm not going to be supporting it, even though I appreciate the comments from each and every one of you on the reasons why, but I have still great doubt that this is going to be the best thing for downtown London.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councillor and Mayor Bergen.
Thank you, Mayor. Clearly, this is a classy development. It checks off a lot of boxes. Very positive all around.
Are you? You're done. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any other comments or questions? Colleagues, see no more questions. We will call the question.
Councillor Pelosi.
Thank you. Just having issues getting my screen to shrink enough. I'll vote yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries 12 to 2.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. Now for the ninth report of the Community Protective Services, councillor Homer.
Thank you. I'm not aware of any items that need to be polled, so perhaps we'll just pause to see if there are any. Otherwise, I'll put the whole report on the floor.
Anything anyone wish to vote on separately? I see none. Councillor Homer?
Okay, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. First, and I think you know, very significant, even though it's a letter of intent, doesn't seem very exciting. The letter of intent with the housing here in London, Middlesex and CMHC federally to allow for the renovation and repair regeneration of over 2,000 units of community housing is remarkable. This is a major part of the multi-year budget and a very significant investment from the federal government in community housing here in London and Middlesex. Just a couple of things that are important, I think, from a high level is that after these projects are undertaken with the financing provided through this loan, part of which is forgivable, and 25% of the emissions from these units will be eliminated. 20% of the units, so of those 2,000 units, just over 400 will be accessible. Very significant improvement in community housing stock in London and much needed. And my gratitude to the federal government in particular and everyone who pushed for significant investment in community housing over the many years to make this as possible. We're getting closer and closer, and I'm really looking forward to seeing the community housing units be rejuvenated. The Skills Ontario Employment Services, there's an update report there, and I just say this is a very good piece of of good news, something the province did, that city started out, you know, pilot program to see if we could work on skills training for people. We did that in partnership with Fanshawe. Program has been fairly successful at the small scale that we ran it at, and this is something that's expanding into the wider region, southwestern Ontario. It's going to be run by the Workforce Planning Board. So I wanted to commend our staff for working on that project and also the province for funding it. I think that was a great move by Minister of Labour, MacNaughton. You'll see that there's a contract award to the ARC. We're going to have another report about this coming forward in the later part of this month about extending services that were temporary. We're going to have them probably in a different location, as you'll see in the report, potentially in a different form, but to continue to provide supports for people who are experiencing homelessness. So this impacts the operations at York Street Temporary Shelter, which was extended to the end of June. And we're going to have a second report coming about additional actions that will be taken, which are outlined in this report. I want to thank staff for turning that around so quickly and all the people who are working on the various responses to help people who are experiencing homelessness get some housing stability and a decent place to live while the pandemic is raging around us. That's it.
Any comments or questions from colleagues? I see none. We will call the question. We will not call the question. I think I have councillor Lewis who wishes to respond.
Thank you, your worship. And it's it's not a respond, it's more of a question through you to staff. We just dealt in the planning committee report with an application where affordable housing was a component of that. And one of the interesting things about that application was that the affordable housing is going to be made available in an existing build so that it's not going to be three years until the new building is built, if that timeline is correct, before those units are available. So through through you to our staff, on the committee's deferred matters list is, of course, the motion through you, your worship, that you brought to the committee with regard to the goal of building 3,000 affordable housing units in five years' time. Are we continuing to, as we look at these housing options? Can staff indicate if there's some coordination with planning on getting some of those units advanced in existing builds similar to what we just saw in the previous proposal?
Can we hear from staff on that? Mr. Dickens, would that be you?
Thank you, your worship. I'm actually going to pass this over to Mr. Kotzviss as the question relates to some of the policies around the development side of things.
That's fair. Go ahead, Mr. Kotzviss, please.
Through your worship, we are proposing to come back with a report this fall on advancing some of these initiatives and I think at that time, we should be able to address most of the councillors' questions and inquiries.
Councillor Lewis.
That's fine. I look forward to both the the coming report on June 22nd that will update us on the report that we're receiving tonight as well as that report in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I see none. We'll call the question.
Councillor Helmer. Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Councillor Homer.
The report.
It is indeed. Thank you very much. I now have the ninth report of the Corporate Services Committee, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, your worship. I will pull a number seven from the council agenda, 2.3. And I have not heard about anything else to be pulled. But I see councillor Anderson's hand up.
Does anyone wish anyone dealt with and voted separately? Councillor Homer?
Just getting on the list.
Okay. You you'll make first on the list when it's that time. Anyone wish anything dealt with to be voted separately? Seeing none, back to you, councillor Cassidy.
So I will put the rest of the report. That's all of the items except for seven, and I'll just comment on number eight, which is 4.1. The Province of Ontario request for comment on code of conduct for members of council. And I just wanted to say that the committee's recommendation was that we receive the report on the Town of Collingwood judicial inquiry that the clerk be requested to include in the contracts with the next City of London Integrity Commissioner requirements that he or she report to municipal council with respect to a lobbyist registry. And also, we wanted to advise Government of Ontario that City of London supports the Association of Municipal Municipalities of Ontario and their recommendations regarding the code of conduct. And that's what was passed by committee and that's our recommendation to council.
Thank you. I have councillor Homer.
My comments are for 2.3. I think we're dealing with all the rest.
We are dealing with all but 2.3.
I'll wait.
You're still on the list. All right. Any other comments or questions? See none, we'll call the question.
Councillor Morgan. Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Councillor Cassidy.
Worship, so 2.3 or item seven on the count on the committee report comes to you with no recommendation. And in order to have a motion on the floor, I would move with a staff recommendation, which was to receive the report and take no action at this time on adjusting the ward boundaries. So I'll, that motion on the floor.
Thank you. I'll now look then for speakers list. I have councillor Homer.
I'm happy to second that motion.
It, okay, thank you very much. So noted. Those wishing to speak. Councillor Homer, why don't we keep you on the list?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and I unsuccessfully made this argument at committee. We had a tie vote at committee about how to proceed. I I really don't think that the ward boundaries need to be adjusted right now. I'm more open to the arguments that councillor Morgan, Deputy Mayor Morgan, has made around the significant underrepresentation that you've got with Ward Seven, where you have a lot more people in that ward than in some of the other wards. And so their effective vote is lowered. You know, I I think that that is an issue, and as it gets close to the 25% threshold, as it is in Ward Seven, we're going to have to act on that. But you know, when we're managing through a you know, when we're managing through a, uh, a crisis, I honestly think people need, you know, if something doesn't have to change, like, why are we going out of our way to change things? And the clerk has looked at the uh, ward boundaries and said, you know what, nothing is above or below twenty-five percent threshold. I don't recommend making any changes, just leave it the way it is. Uh, I think a comprehensive review, which is outlined in the report, is necessary, um, and I think that that can happen sort of in the early part of next term of council, when the pandemic will be in the rearview mirror, and people will be able to fully engage in a discussion about how the ward boundary should be arranged. We've had massive population growth in London, you know, um, over the last little while, very significant. And I think having the benefit of the census, which is just coming up, like, we're underway now, the census week was just back in May, we're gonna have the results of that at the beginning of the next term of council, we're gonna have federal redistricting, where I, I certainly hope that we'll get another electoral district federally in London, which we are long overdue for, I think. Um, and we could have some significant redrawings of the political boundaries in the city, and then when we have the benefit of all that, we can have our own comprehensive review, try and understand what's going on with the student population, uh, which doesn't really get captured very well by the census, and then make the adjustments then perhaps more significant than what has been proposed by Deputy Mayor Morgan or, uh, by councillor Lewis. Speaking very specifically to the change that has been advocated for uh, between Ward Four and Ward Two, I will say, based on the feedback that I've had from people, uh, there are some people who think this is a great idea and we should do it right away. Um, there are some people who think, yes, decent idea, but like, why would we do that now? Uh, there's some people who really don't have a very strong opinion, and there's some people who are dead set against it, uh, so far disinhaling from people, and generally I would say really heard from a pretty small fraction of the people who would be affected, we're talking about six hundred and fifty of people, it's obviously almost ten times as many people uh, in the other change that's being proposed between seven, five, and three. Uh, so I'd say just leave it alone. I don't think it's really necessary to move, you know, an area that's, uh, three, three and a half percent over, over to an area that's twelve percent under, when our thresholds are twenty-five percent plus or minus. It's just not a pressing urgent problem, and, and I think we should leave it alone and wait for next council term and deal with it then.
Thank you. I have, uh, Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Yes, um, your worship, given my understanding of what the committee passed and what's on the floor, which is just the component of the motion that said, uh, that the report, uh, for Ward Boundary should be received, and that the committee did not recommend any take no action motion, uh, I am going to attempt, uh, the amendment I made at committee again. I also like, uh, councillor Helmer was unable to convince people or enough people to support it, and I'd like to put that on the floor, and I can explain my reasons, um, for so, which, uh, which, uh, I will do so if I have a second, and I, and I'm going to, um, at the committee, I, I put two amendments on the floor separate. Uh, I'm only gonna put the one related to my ward. Uh, everybody's represented at council, they can take the actions that they feel are necessary. So the amendment I would like to attempt to make is, um, that, uh, the clerk be directed to proceed to arrange a public participation meeting, including any necessary information, and a future meeting of the Corporate Services Committee with respect to the following proposed ward boundary adjustment as outlined in the staff report, May thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, with respect to the matter, option four, Ward Seven, Masonville area to Ward Five, Ward Five, Fanshawe Park Road area to Ward Three.
You have a secondor in councillor Lewis. Any comments or discussion on this?
Maybe I can.
I have a, I have a point of order, your, your worship.
Councillor Cassidy, go ahead.
So I misspoke in that the committee made no decision, the committee, uh, the committee received the report, but I did make a motion that said, uh, the, the, the staff recommendation, and although I, my wording was incorrect, I still made that motion, and so I believe that that motion should be on the floor first.
Just bear with us, please. Clerks confer. Just bear with us a moment. So Chair, you brought up a thoughtful question to the point that, uh, we think we're going to ask, uh, uh, the clerk to, uh, just give a little direction on that, uh, because there's some question relative to the original motion uh, and taking no action. So with that, perhaps I can ask the clerk to put some, uh, clarity to this, please.
Uh, if you, Mr. Mayor, I'm assuming you meant the city clerk and not the clerk in the room, just to verify.
Well, we're, we're lucky, we're lucky that all the clerks are nice and have wisdom, but I'm looking for the city clerk for this, please.
Okay, it's more difficult when you're not in the room to see what's, uh, happening, so I just didn't want to step in if, uh, Mr. Schulz was gonna answer. Um, so the motion that, uh, it came from committee is to receive the report, which is in order, and uh, the chair has put that on the, on the floor. It is also in order for councillor Morgan to put forward an amendment to that motion. So what would happen is the received part would become, if it, if the amendment passes, the received part would be, A, just that you receive the staff report, and then B would be whatever the amendment is.
Understood. Uh, I see the couns, the, the chair has a question about that. Councillor Cassidy, go ahead.
So my words were, receive the report, and I wanted to move also the staff recommendation to not change the ward boundaries, and councillor Helmer seconded that motion. Whether I needed to say the words, I amend the motion, I, I made my, my intention very clear that I wanted to make that motion. Does my motion not count because I'm the chair of the committee?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, um, if I could assist. Um, so what you would do is put the original motion from the committee, which is to receive, and then you and councillor Helmer could put an amendment on the floor to receive and take no action, I assuming that's, uh, what that motion would be. Um, and then, yes, then that would have to be dealt with, and then if that fails, then councillor Morgan could put his amendment on the floor.
All right, so then I will ask the clerk now, because, uh, the motion to receive with, I appreciate where the, uh, where the chair of the committee has indicated and duly seconded about taking no action, which is a specific step. And we also have uh, Deputy Mayor Morgan's amendment. And so to the, to the city clerk, if I might ask, then will we, based on what you've just said, it sounds like we should be dealing with uh, councillor Cassidy and councillor Helmer's amendment first about taking no action before we go to the amendment? Is that my, that's what I've heard you say, is that, is that correct, my understanding?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. I, I apologize, I, when I was listening to councillor Cassidy at first, I did not hear the part about take no action, I just heard the receive.
No, we, we, yeah, we heard that.
So, yeah, so she, uh, councillor, uh, Cassidy, Helmer's amendment would put on the floor. You'd have to vote on it. If it fails, then councillor Morgan could put his motion on the floor. Because councillor Morgan's would be contrary.
So I will rule that, um, that the, um, that the chair's amendment seconded by, uh, councillor Helmer takes precedence over the amendment put forward by Dep, the deputy mayor and duly seconded. So with that, we have an amendment, uh, on the floor, which is to take no action. Uh, moved and seconded. Is there, are there comments or questions around that? Deputy Mayor?
Yes, and let me just say, I, I think I agree with the ruling that has been made, um, uh, and I agree with the process of it being an amendment from councillor Cassidy and councillor, uh, Helmer. So I will speak against the amendment, um, and I will make an articulate argument in case for the motion that I would like to make, um, on behalf of my constituents, uh, when you will allow me to do that. Um, and I will ask council, please, uh, allow me to be on, on behalf of my constituents, put that motion on the floor, whether you want to vote for it or defeat it, um, so that it can be definitive and that I can represent them to the best of my ability, because I do have very strong views uh, about the democratic components of, uh, the way that my ward is, uh, is constituted. Uh, I will absolutely respect the final opinion of council, but I would ask you to defeat the amendment so that I can at the very least put it on the floor, uh, and make my case. Um, that is all I'm gonna say about the amendment, and I would, uh, hope that I have the opportunity to make the case uh, for the amendment that I would like to make.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, councillor Lewis?
Uh, thank you, your worship. I too am rising to speak against, uh, the motion that's on the floor. Uh, not only do I support councillor Morgan having the chance, uh, to get his motion on the floor uh, in the interest of democratic fairness, uh, but I would have a subsequent motion with respect to my ward boundaries. Uh, at that time, I would speak to that as well, um, but I I do want to add one other very significant component. We, we heard, uh, in bringing this forward, you know, why would we have to do this now? Well, the reality is, colleagues, if we do not do this now, if we do not allow councillor Morgan to get that motion forward and, and at least consider public options, we are then not going to make any changes to ward boundaries until twenty twenty-six. Um, I support the, the call for a comprehensive review, I really do. Um, in fact, and I mean no disrespect to those who are, are returning councillors from the previous council, uh, but I think it should have been done last time. However, uh, it didn't, and we don't have time to do a comprehensive review now, but the last council did make some minor ward boundary adjustments, and I think that this council, uh, in the interest of the demographic changes that are facing our city, uh, need to do that. So I hope that you'll let us get these motions on the floor, which, by the way, would trigger public participation meetings, not a final decision on ward boundaries.
Councillor Turner?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, thanks to my colleagues for your comments. Uh, that's through you, uh, to the city clerk. If, uh, if this, uh, the motion as put forward here, which is basically, uh, uh, be received and directed not to proceed with changes to the existing ward boundaries at this time, what would be the time? Uh, would this be something that would be brought forward, or do you need direction to bring this forward at the earliest, uh, opportunity in the next term?
Let's ask the city clerk.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, um, we, we would bring it forward, uh, near the beginning of the next term of council for, uh, because we would need to go through a request for a proposal uh, process and, uh, need approval to do that. So it, it's, you can give us direction if you wish, but it's certainly our intent to move forward with that comprehensive review, um, shortly after the election in twenty twenty-two, in the early twenty, and into twenty twenty-three.
Councillor Turner?
I thank you, that's helpful. So, uh, I'm supportive of the motion as it's put forward on the table right now. Uh, I'm not supportive of, uh, uh, of the proposed amendments, and I think, uh, one of the, the concerns that I, I'm hearing too is that, um, kind of that, uh, that slippery slope, okay, well, what about my ward, what about my ward, what about my ward, and, uh, and that gets messy. Um, I think it does need to be in a very purposeful and clean way, and I think it, uh, it's something that does need to be done at at the appropriate point, and it needs to have enough runway. Uh, it needs to have enough time for the community to be consulted in a meaningful way, it needs to be done uh, with enough background and enough information, um, and, uh, and, and full and meaningful public participation. And I don't see that being done in the next six months. Um, and, and with challenged opportunities to do so over the next six months, as we have some gathering limits and, uh, um, and, uh, restrictions on our abilities to, to congregate. Uh, we can find alternatives to, uh, to providing public input, but I, I would much rather see these in, uh, uh, in, uh, community centers and, uh, um, and libraries, so that we can have the discussion with constituents and, and do so in a meaningful way. Uh, the, the clerk's response is, is helpful to me, because I, I think it does need to be done right at the outset of the term. Um, if we wait until, uh, two, two and a half years in, it's too late, uh, and it's, it's not the appropriate time. Councillor Helmer makes the appropriate points about, uh, about the variation, the variance from, um, from the midpoint of the amount of populations in each ward. I recognize that the deputy mayor's concerned about the size for Ward Seven. I understand that, I understand the, um, the, the perception of disproportionality, I understand the, the increased workload that comes with that. Uh, I'm, I'm not empathetic to, uh, to the arguments that are being made. I don't think it's the appropriate time. Um, I think it is needed. I think the appropriate time is at the beginning of next term.
Thank you. Councillor Kevaga?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I took my hat down because I thought that uh, councillor Turner had said most of what I wanted to say. Um, I also do support, um, the amendment on the floor, uh, moved by councillor Cassidy and councillor, uh, Helmer. And I agree that we don't have enough time, the six months, uh, you know, it, we're almost, uh, at the end of the year, and it's not gonna give us enough time, as we know that not everybody has been vaccinated, and we're still dealing with the pandemic, we're still in, in the pandemic. So, um, I think that this would leave a lot of people out, a lot of people's inputs out, and I support the staff recommendation that, um, doing it in next term would be the best, um, outcome. But I also don't want to, um, dismiss what, um, councillor Morgan has mentioned about his ward. Um, I, I, I do support this motion, and I think that that could be addressed in the next, um, uh, in the next round, when they, they do revise the ward boundaries, um, and the, the number of, of growth, um, in, across the city is not that significant, that we can't hold off until the next, um, uh, the next round, uh, after the next election. So I think that we have very limited time, and any change that we may make will leave and impact a lot of people, especially, um, you know, people who don't normally find it easy to, to access to city services and to participate in in the electoral, um, decisions, and we're trying to, 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 to work to that, we're trying to get more people to be involved, younger people to be involved, be people of uh, many diverse communities in our city to be involved, and, um, doing this right now would be, uh, a quick reaction that would leave a lot of people out. It's not everybody who's paying attention to what the city's doing every two seconds. Uh, so I would, I will support the amendment.
Thank you. I have councillor Hopkins.
Yes, thank you, your worship, and, uh, really appreciate the conversation that we're having about the ward boundary, um, discussion tonight. I, I hear, uh, what councillor, uh, or deputy mayor Morgan and councillor Lewis are saying about wanting to represent their constituents. And, uh, I, I, I hear that, and wanting to have that opportunity, uh, I'm not exactly sure what that opportunity would look like, and I really do appreciate the comments, um, or the question from councillor Turner as to when the comprehensive review will take place, which is not that far off. And at that time, I, I see that engagement, Ward Nine will probably be part of that conversation as well on how, uh, to look at the growth in population, having the consensus uh, done, i- is, is really important. I, I looked at the report and, and saw what other municipalities are doing when they have discussions about ward, ward boundary changes. They get a consultant, it takes a, a year, a year and a half to get that done. So I think to have a really good understanding about the need to make these changes, I think that will happen, and it's not too far off. So I will be supporting, uh, the motion on the floor.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this? Councillor Cassidy? This is to the amendment.
Yes, thank you, your worship. And, uh, first of all, I, I understand exactly where the deputy mayor is coming from, and, and I want to say, um, from the, from the start, that I know for him, this is not about workload, he doesn't feel like he's working harder than any other councillor. It's about adequate representation. So one person uh, is spread amongst a certain number of people, and so he wants to make sure that his constituents are getting the right percentage of a councillor compared to other wards. I, I completely agree with, uh, with that, uh, that, that, that rationale and that motivation. I don't think that this is the right time. Councillor Helmer, councillor Turner pointed out, uh, uh, this same idea, but But I will say that the idea of community engagement, public engagement is extremely, extremely important. Last term, just before the election, there was a little bit of rejigging amongst, or between wards five and six and seven, I believe. And I know for Ward Five in particular, and Counselor Hopkins is waving her ward as well. So I know personally in Ward Five, about 100 voters were transferred from seven to five. There was a lot of uncertainty when I was knocking on doors about, and not everybody, in the best of times, knows who their ward counselor is. And that's fine as well. It means that their life is good, I guess. But I think we would be talking about moving a substantial number of people around. My concern is undoing that. So already, that would require quite a large amount of communication, quite a large amount of engagement, public participation meetings. I believe more than just one would be required. And so what happens after this comprehensive review? After the census data is released? After a consultant is hired to do the count on students that we really, really need? What happens after all of that? And then we have to maybe turn around and undo some of the changes. So let's say we make changes this term of council. We do this review. Then to go back and undo some of those changes, it's just going to add more confusion than what already exists. I'll share, you know, just that minor change of adding polling stations. I added, they added a couple of polling stations for voters in Ward Five in the last election. I had a long-term, very engaged voter contact me on voting day to tell me he was very sorry. He wanted to vote for me, but he wasn't voting at all because he wasn't aware that now he had a new polling station, and he had to go somewhere else after years of going to the same place. So this kind of communication has to be done very thoroughly, very thoughtfully. And it's too important to rush it along. I also want to point out students. There are a substantial number of students living in Ward Five. People might not know that because I don't have student residences, and I don't have a lot of high-rise apartment buildings in Ward Five. There are a lot of townhouse condo developments along Richmond Street and along Windermere Road, substantial student population in there. Ward Six has a huge student population. Ward Three, these students are not being counted right now. If you see the report, I think a couple thousand Western students are included in the count. We know that there are tens of thousands of Western students. So I think we have to take our time. We have to do this right. It has to be done, absolutely. But it has to be done slowly, methodically, and it has to be done right and once in a few years, not a few times every single year. So that's my reason for the amendment. I'm not against the rejigging. I'm against doing it at this time.
Thank you, Counselor Clozer.
Thank you, your worship. I voted in favor of considering the public participation meetings at committee, and I'll be doing so again tonight. Even for Ward Twelve, we went from middle of the pack for ward populations up to third. I do consider Ward Twelve very diverse, that we have an urban area, plus we still have all the rural countryside. And I did take part of Counselor Hopkins' word came over last time. And even next time when we go back out, many of us will have brand-new subdivisions of New Londoners we get to talk to who never were engaged with us, which is an exciting opportunity. Just for anyone watching, certainly the polling stations do change. That was a report that we accepted earlier as part of this process, recognizing accessibility standards, parking requirements. And now civic administration is going to look at active transportation requirements and bike parking as well. So things are changing. But I have to acknowledge when counselors come forward, wanting to speak on behalf of their constituents regardless if we do accept what they want or not, that they have an opportunity to be heard, especially when they're talking about a large population that they represent, making sure that they have equal representation and stay at the table. I do take that very seriously in democracy as we're colleagues sitting around this virtual horseshoe that everyone feels they have an opportunity to raise those concerns on behalf of their residents. And public participation does look different right now as we go through multiple waves of COVID. But I am interested in those conversations. So I will be voting no on the amendment tonight and hope there'll be a discussion later about what to do. Counselor Hillier and I, we discussed our words, and part of it in a staff report was potentially some of Counselor Hopkins coming over. And we did want the deep dive of a full look into what could be done as we have a diverse population. And we decided we were happy to wait for that report for the next term of council and make a decision then. But I do respect those counselors who, for their words, are saying they want that conversation now, and I will vote to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other speakers on the list. This is voting for, we have in front of us, colleagues, the amendment put forward by Counselor Cassidy and Counselor Helmer. We will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion fails, seven to seven.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, colleagues. And thank you for the opportunity to put my motion on the floor regardless of how you vote. I would like to move an amendment to this to put option four on the floor as it's articulated in the committee report. I read it out before. And I'd like to have the opportunity to make some arguments for that.
And you have your secondary with Counselor Lewis. Thank you very much. Comments or questions, colleagues? Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I'll just go right off the top because I know a lot of people spoke to the arguments. And first off, let me say, I appreciate everyone's perspective on this. And I, again, appreciate the opportunity to put my motion on the floor. And I will tell you why I want to do so, some of which you've heard. If we do not make an adjustment now, the residents that I represent will be stuck with the current ward boundary and all of the growth that will occur to it until the end of 2026. And to me, that is not acceptable. I know, given the, I said, I can reasonably project, given the growth rates that are in the staff report and how close Ward Seven is to the 25% threshold, that for those who think that number is important, there is a very, very strong likelihood that Ward Seven passes that. And I would like the residents of my ward to have the opportunity to be represented relatively on par with the rest of the city. And I believe this ward in particular is out of alignment with the others. And a small correction, or even what will end up being a large correction because it is so far out of line, I think is reasonable. And for those who say the timing is not good, I agree. This is not the ideal time to do this, but we don't have much of a choice unless you want to leave it this way until the end of 2026. When we wanted to move to a system of ranked ballots, we were willing to push the boundaries on timing and the time that regulations came in. And it was important for democracy, in my opinion. And in my ward, I believe this is important for the democracy of my ward, that the residents who are represented by a counselor are represented as equally as we can possibly make it across the city within reason. And so I accept that there are different boundaries for reasons with different counselors. I accept that, and I will stand by council's final decision on this wholeheartedly. But I do appreciate the option, the opportunity to make the case because I do feel personally that Ward Seven needs a correction before the end of 2026 to ensure that those representatives' voice is magnified at a relatively similar level to the other voices across the city and that the 37,000 people, or whatever it will be, do not have to funnel all of their perspectives and ideas and wishes through one counselor, whereas other wards, more like 20,000, 24,000, have the opportunity to do the same. So that is my case. I appreciate all of the arguments that have been made, and I appreciate very much so the colleagues who allowed me the opportunity to put this on the floor, regardless of whether you support me or not at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, dealing with this specific amendment, does anyone have anything else they wish to add to the discussion? Counselor Helmer.
Thanks very much. Through the mayor, I'm interested to know, has anyone talked to Counselor Sully about what he thinks of changing Ward Three boundaries?
Are you directing that?
Counselor Morgan, who's proposing the change, if you have any insight on that front, that we're talking about moving 4,000 people almost into Ward Three.
Sir, are you directing that to the deputy mayor, Counselor Helmer?
Seems like a reasonable person to ask.
Well, he is a reasonable person. Let's ask him.
Yes, no, I have not had specific conversations with Counselor Sully. I have made all my motions at public meetings, and I don't think it's any surprise that this would be on the floor tonight at council. So, but no, I have not had any specific side conversations with Counselor Sully about this.
Counselor Helmer.
The only point I would make about this one, and I think that, you know, Counselor Morgan is quite right to be concerned about the growing population between now and 2026. You know, that's when the sort of next opportunity for changes would come into place. It's very normal to have boundary adjustments basically on a 10-year cycle. And it's really only at the local level because of our own policy, where we're looking at the boundaries every term of council, so every four years rather than every, say, 10 years, which is what happens at the provincial and federal levels. And we made some changes not that long ago to relieve some of the pressure in Ward Seven. Other areas of the city are also growing. Downtown, we just approved, we just approved new developments down there. A lot of what has happened in Ward Seven is not going to be repeated. You know, entire subdivisions that are now in place are not going to be added in. And so I'm not, I guess I'm not as concerned about the future population growth in Ward Seven compared to where it is now. And I don't want us to kind of assume that what has happened in the past is going to be what's happening in the future. If we execute on the London Plan, that shouldn't be what happens. We should start seeing more and more population growth in the core and a little bit less in the suburban parts of the city. Both of the areas that are identified for moving, lesser extent the part that's further east, are areas where I expect there to be significant off-campus student housing based on what we can see in terms of unoccupied dwellings. These are dwellings not occupied by usual residents, right? That's how it shows up in the census. And certainly the area that's sort of to the west currently in Ward Seven that's being proposed to go to Ward Five is one of these areas where you're going to have a fair number of students, not as intense as other parts of the city, but a fair number. And I just want to point out that we really have no idea how many people are in there. We're really undercounting those people because the only student numbers we have are for the residences, and none of them are in this area. So, you know, I just think this is a good example of the kind of change that we shouldn't really make until we have better information on it. And I know it kind of sounds like a boring thing to do, which is we're just going to make any changes till we get better information. But it may be that there's a better solution to this problem than the changes being proposed right now. It could involve moving this exact same area after we do the comprehensive review. It could be suggested to move it somewhere else. And then you have moving people and then moving them again. And that's what I'm really trying to avoid, is like unnecessary changes that we can just avoid. So I'm not convinced. I think we really need to listen carefully to advice from the staff who work in the city who look at ward boundaries and make recommendations, rather than, you know, really being motivated by political preferences around, you know, we should change these ward boundaries for these reasons. I just think this is an area where the more neutral, the more staff-driven the process is and community-driven the process is, the better. You know, I've got my own preferences around how these things should be drawn out. But I actually don't think we should make those kind of changes in this way. So I hear what Counselor Morgan's saying. I think that this area is probably one that could move in the future. Once we have a good sense of how many students are living in that area, we'll have a good sense of how many people are actually being moved. For now, I would just say I would leave it. You know, I have less strong feelings about it than the one in Ward Four and Ward Two. But I would leave this one alone.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, worship. First, I just want to, through you with staff, get some clarification. Right now, we're just dealing with an amendment to the motion to receive the staff report.
Specifically, we're dealing with the motion that you seconded moved by Counselor Morgan.
Yes, so we're not dealing with the main motion. So there will be an opportunity for an additional amendment to come. Checking with you through clerks.
That would be my presumption, clerk. Your, what I believe Counselor Lewis is saying, he does not want his component of this to be impacted and his ability to put that forward. So clerk, city clerk, do you have a comment on that?
Mr. Mayor, I concur with you. The motion that's currently on the floor only deals with option four.
And to deal with the option as we know that Counselor Lewis intends to present, is that in order as far as you are concerned?
Yes, it would be another amendment.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis, are you done?
Thank you, worship. So I'll wait to deal with my own amendments until after we've dealt with this one. I think that's appropriate. I just want to, on this specific amendment, emphasize again what I said on the original motion that was defeated. If we approve this tonight, we are not authorizing changes to be made to the ward boundary. What we are doing is initiating a public engagement process. And I've heard from colleagues who voted both ways on the original amendment that a public engagement process is very important to them. And I agree, it should be. But that's what we would be voting on if we approve this, to move forward with a public engagement process. The results may come back and tell us we're completely off-base on this, on the piece that I'm interested in. But it's an opportunity to have that discussion. And yes, we are still in a pandemic. We are making decisions on planning applications as well during a pandemic. We have virtual meetings. In fact, for some individuals attending, being able to attend a meeting virtually by phoning in may be easier than them attending that community center or that library. I certainly understand the desire that was expressed by, and I'm sorry if I'm attributing this to Counselor Turner when it was Counselor Cassidy. One of them made this comment that it would be great to have these in community centers and libraries. And I agree that there's a benefit to that because residents can have an exchange with each other. But there is an opportunity for them to engage with us still through this process now. So I'm going to be supporting this. I think Ward Seven is particularly important to address because of the demographics, because of how close they already are to the threshold and the projected growth that will be happening there over the next term. And the fact that the next time, while we can start the comprehensive review in early 2023, changes to representation will not come into effect until the 2026 election cycle. So I think it's really important that we adjust this ward so that the citizens there have an opportunity to have fair representation by population through their counselor.
Thanks very much. I have no one else on the, I do have someone else in the speakers. This happens to be Counselor Squire.
I'm not going to be very long. I, in the past, when issues like this have come up, I've always supported a comprehensive approach. I think an approach where we look at the entire picture at one time and say, here's all of the wards and here's how we need to do it. And I don't think we should be encouraging ourselves or staff to come to us at the end of a term and say, let's make that change now. I don't think this is that urgent that we can't do it in a comprehensive manner. So I'm going to stay consistent to that. And I'm going to support, I supported the earlier motion. I'm going to vote against these motions for that reason because as much sympathy as I might have for anyone in a ward, there's a lot of wards that may have other reasons why they want their boundaries to change, preferences, things like that. So I'm going to continue on that course and look for a comprehensive solution to what may or may not be a problem.
Thanks very much. Anyone else who wish to comment on this? See, and then we'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion fails, six to eight.
Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, worship. Well, I'm going to rise, although given the way the votes have gone, I will probably be back to receiving the report, but I'm still going to put an amendment on the floor, and I will let the clerk, for the sake of brevity, insert the language from the corporate services report. It's the option 7, which would move a small portion of Ward 4 into Ward 2. It would transfer about 650 individuals over into Ward 2. Certainly, my ward is one of the smaller wards. First, I'll look to see, make sure I've got a seconder, sorry, getting into my arguments before-
Yeah, let's see if you have a seconder. Let's do that. That's probably thoughtful. Counselor Pelosi, thank you. Go ahead then, Counselor Lewis.
With thanks to Counselor Pelosi for seconding there. While this may not seem to be a significant change, and certainly as one of the counselors who represents one of the smaller wards, you know, I'm actually offering to take on more individuals and more work when I could choose not to do that. But the reason I'm supportive of this and the reason I'm asking for colleague's support is the principle of communities of interest. And there is a strong community of interest tie in making this change. And communications were received at committee from the Argyle Business Improvement Association. This change would move the entire BIA into a single ward. Communication was also received from the Argyle Community Association. That community association would then be represented by counselors in two wards instead of three. Communications were also received from two of the church parishes who are divided right now by a congregation that's half in Ward 2 and half in Ward 4 on opposite sides of Hale Street. This is a small adjustment population-wise, but it is an adjustment for a community of interest that's important to the residents who are involved in any of these organizations, and it's important to me as well that they have their chance to, to be heard. So again, I'm asking for support to have a public engagement process on this, see what the public thinks. I know that Counselor Helmer, to his credit, has engaged with some folks already. He's gotten some mixed responses. I've engaged with some folks as well. My responses have been more positive. I, I haven't had any opponents, but I understand Counselor Helmer has, which is why I would like to hear more on this and have that public participation process. So I hope that folks will support it. I recognize this might be a little bit of a long shot, but that's my reason for asking for this.
Thank you. Any other comments on this particular amendment? Counselor Homer. Counselor Homer, go ahead.
Thank you. Just on this particular proposal, until counselors start advocating for changing the Ward boundaries, this is not something that people bring up very often. I will tell you that because this area is in provincially in London fanshot and it's on the other side of Highbury, people are confused sometimes about which ward that they're in. When I was first running in 2014, you know, people were confused about who their counselor was. Some people are still confused. That happens along all the adjacencies around the wards. You know, it happens in Kip Slane between Counselor Sully and I. It happens sometimes pretty far into other people's wards or contacting the wrong people. That happens, and I don't really think that's a good reason for changing Ward boundaries. I would say that the communities are, are sort of divided by Highbury, but they have a lot of things in common. So the people who are living on the other side of Highbury, on the west side of Highbury, basically are contacting me about the same kind of issues as the people who are on the east side of Highbury. You know, they both have a lot of rental units along the main corridor. They've got a pretty stable residential neighborhoods on, on other side of Highbury. And they use basically all the same recreational and, and cultural facilities that are in the area, like they're, they're in basically the same neighborhood. And what I'm seeing in responses from people so far, since I've been forced to contact people and say, hey, how do you want, you want to make this change that the city clerk is not recommending? People on the west side are very keen on keeping people in Ward 4. They just don't see the reason for the change at all, and a lot of people who are supportive of it just say, why would you bother with this now? Like of all things to be working on, why are you talking about changing Ward boundaries, especially this particular change? And then there are people who are closer to the Hale side, so on the further side, on the right side, who, you know, they're very oriented towards Argyle. And so they're like, yeah, sure, like we could change. And some of them say, we should change right now because it's a great idea. And some of them are saying, you know what, it's not. And I get, isn't that evidence right there that like, why are you bothering to deal with this? Like, it's not a problem. We have a lot of real problems that we have to focus on. And this particular problem, like my ward has got 3.5% more than the optimal number of people. Is that a problem? No, it's not. Counselor Lewis's ward is a little bit under, like it's 12, 12.8% under. Is that a problem? Yeah, it's a little bit of a problem. So they have more voting power than some other places in the city, and so we're going to take it away. That's our urgent problem is we got to dilute the voting power of people in Ward 2 by adding some more people into Ward, Ward 2. It's not really an urgent problem, right? And I, I think people in this area would prefer us to work on stuff like property crime, the noise that comes from Highbury when there's something that's just disconnected from the road and people are banging on it with their freight vehicles. These are the kind of issues that people are contacting me about. You know, they, they do use all the same services. They go to the same churches. They do that from the, the west side of Highbury and the east side of Hale. It's all sort of one, one big community, and I just would not make the change right now. It's not worth doing. I do think that this change in the long run, this probably changes could be made, is move that part that's east of Highbury into, into Ward 2, but don't do it now. It's just not necessary. It's like going out of our way to find problems that don't, that don't need to be fixed right now. So I just leave it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this very specific amendment? I see none. We'll call the question.
Counselor Carrabaga? Closing the vote, motion fails, five to nine.
So colleagues, that brings us back to the original motion by Counselor Cassidy, seconded by Counselor Homer, I believe. It seems like a while ago to, I believe it is to receive the report. Will you clarify that, clerk?
Yes, that's correct.
Thanks very much. Any comments or questions with respect to receiving the report? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries, 13 to one.
Colleagues, there's, oh, back to you, Counselor Cassidy.
Report, your worship.
Thanks very much. Aren't you lucky that you weren't here where you'd have to stand for all of that? Thank you. There are no deferred matters nor inquiries that I've been, for which I've been made aware. Colleagues, perhaps for the benefit of the public, we're going to go through some bylaws. And just to let you know, we will then go into closed session. When we report out of closed session, we will also have the most recent report of the Corporate Services Committee. There was one item that was dealt with, pass those bylaws as appropriate and then conclude the meeting. But it's my intention after we go through the bylaws and prior to confidential session, it being 10 to 7, that we have a break. I think just a brief pause and do that for 15 minutes sharp and then do it at that time, and then we'll move right into confidential session. So if that's, if that has, if there's no objections to that, I'm going to go now with the bylaws. And colleagues, we have bills 270, 272 through 285 inclusive, for which I am looking for a mover and secondary of introduction, first reading. Do I have a mover? Counselor Pelosi, seconded by Counselor Van Holst. Let's call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries, 14 to zero.
Colleagues, I'll look for a mover and secondary of second reading of bills 270 and 272 through 285 inclusive. Van Meurbergen, seconded by Counselor Lewis. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries, 14 to zero.
Colleagues, I'll look for a mover and secondary of third reading and enactment of bills 270 and 272 through 285 inclusive. Do I have a mover, please? Counselor Pelosi, seconded by, I will call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries, 14 to zero.
Now, your colleagues, now I'll turn your attention to bills 271, which deal with 435 through 451, Riteout Street. So for first reading, I'm going to look for a mover and secondary of introduction and first reading, moved by Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Lehman. We will call the question.
Your worship.
Yes, Counselor Lehman.
Your worship, could I ask for a 286 to be called separate?
Oh, I apologize. Thank you very much. Counselor Turner's asked for that 286, so we'll split that into two bills. So 271, Counselor Lewis, Counselor Lehman, you're comfortable with moving in seconding? It's just bill 271, colleagues. We'll put that on the table now. Just bear with us as we make that adjustment.
With apologies, Mr. Mayor, can you please indicate who the mover and secondary were for me? I missed that.
I'm sorry, that didn't all come through. What, what clarification are you looking for?
Sorry, I missed the mover and seconder of first reading and enactment, or first reading of 271.
Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Lehman.
Counselor Turner? Closing the vote, motion carries, 14 to zero.
Please, I'll look for a mover and secondary of second reading of bill 271, moved by Counselor Van Meurbergen, seconded by Counselor Lewis. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote.
Counselor Hopkins? Closing the vote, motion carries, 13 to one.
Third reading and enactment of bill 271, I will look for a mover and a seconder, please, moved by Counselor Helmer, seconded by Counselor Cassidy. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries, 13 to one.
Now to bill 286. I'll look for a mover and secondary for introduction, first reading, moved by Counselor Lehman, seconded by Counselor Pelosi. Thank you. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries, 12 to two.
Colleagues, your second reading of bill 286, moved by Counselor Cassidy, seconded by Counselor Lewis. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries, 12 to two.
Finally, an enactment of bill 286. I'll look for a mover and a seconder, please, moved by Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Van Holst. Thank you. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries, 12 to two.
Thanks very much. If we want to go into closed session, I'd like to ask the clerk to advise the public of the items that we're dealing with in closed session. City clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are going into closed session for three items related to the Corporate Services Committee meeting held on May 31, Freeland acquisitions, and as well, there is an additional reason related to the special meeting of Corporate Services that was held on June 14, which is also a property matter.
Thank you very much. Therefore, on that, I'll look for a mover and seconder to go into closed session, moved by Counselor Pelosi, seconded by Counselor Lehman. We'll call the question. And as I do that, colleagues, we will reconvene at 7:15 in closed session to give those who have an opportunity to have a, a short break as we then finish the rest of our council business. We will call the question.
Counselor Lewis? Counselor Lewis? Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Colleagues, we'll see you at well, thank you very much.
We have a motion to recess, please?
I thought that's what closed session kind of did, but I guess we need to look for a motion to recess, Counselor Lewis.
I know I'm being picky, but.
Yes, you are, but that's why you're the clerk, seconded by Deputy Mayor Morgan. Thank you very much. Would you accept a show of hands to to move this along, Madam Clerk?
Certainly. I'm sure the deputy clerk can tell me it carries based on what he's also seeing.
Perfect. Show of hands, please, colleagues.
It carries.
Thanks very much. See you at seven fifteen. Thank you. And thank you, clerk. Without you, it would, we would be without you.